Just a couple of cases, and we should be able to get through them pretty quickly. The first one will be case number 4140, and it is Mr. D'Ambrosa, and it was continued from November the 4th. What I am going to do is have the clerk read the legal ad into the record, and then we will continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 4140, the Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Plymouth Inc., requesting a modification of special permit, case 4058, and a variance required per section 2033(c)(5)(b) to allow internal illumination and per section 203d1, Table 1, to waive maximum size of freestanding directional signs for a hospital on the property of 275 Sandwich Street, shown as lots 24A on Platte 26 of the Assessor's Maps dated January 1, 2024, in an R25 medium lot zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person deserving to be heard on this matter should appear at the date and time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this case will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, Mr. Peck, and myself. And Mr. D'Ambrosia will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Hope you had a nice Thanksgiving. Denise, do you have? Okay. Okay. No, no problem. So we have a PowerPoint. It pictures worth a thousand words, but, you know, I like to, I can give you a thousand words. It's my forte, so I'll do my best here without the visual aid and present this to you. So as Mr. O'Reilly read into the record, you know, we're here for a variance and special permit. This is the fourth project I've appeared before this board for on behalf of the hospital. Just to kind of run by it, just to refresh your memory, in 2022, the hospital created an observation facility of modular build adjacent to the kind of main entrance, if you will, to the left. Later in 2022, I came before you for a very similar petition to this one for internally illuminated signage. This board saw fit to grant that request, then was back here late last year, early 2024, for the expansion and reconfiguration of the emergency department, and now we're here back again for signage, for internally illuminated signage. So again, as you can tell from that brief rundown, the last couple of years, the hospitals have made great efforts to improve the physical plant and the patient experience, and this is just one such measure for safety and clarity of navigation on the premises. Again, the difference between this and 2022 is we had a little different procedural path. In 2022, we took the special permit route, went through the planning board, kind of toggled at the last minute to a variance. Now, this time, we kind of set off down the variance path from the get-go. Again, reason being that the zoning bylaw doesn't contemplate internally illuminated signs. That's why it's a variance and not a special permit. So a special permit could be for things like square footage, which is one of the relief items, although I don't think it's strictly necessary. A variance is when there's really no alternative, and in this case, that was what Inspection Services directed us to seek from this board. So I've got with me Kevin Coughlin, the president of BID Plymouth. Of course, you know me, D'Ambrosa Law here in Plymouth, Rob D'Ambrosa. We don't have our sign vendor with us tonight. I don't think we need him because we've got his work product, if we can bring it up on the screen at some point. But I'll kind of walk you through what we're doing. So again, internal illumination isn't allowed. That's 2033(c)(5)(b) of the zoning bylaw is the, forbids internal illumination. That's why we need the variance. And then the zoning bylaw has a signage table that sets forth numbers, sizes of signs, et cetera, and if we exceed certain thresholds for size, that dictates a special permit. Again, I think we're just under what is needed for relief, but didn't want to rock the boat, and that's how it was advertised. So this proposal is for four freestanding directional signs for wayfinding purposes. Three of them are along Sandwich Street, and then one is along the parking lot to the south of the building that has access from O'Bree. So as you come in, kind of that main drag on O'Bree, right before you reach that circular traffic navigation area to the right is another sign. These four sign locations, there are existing signs approximate to where these are, so in a manner of speaking, these are replacing existing signs. I think one might be sort of a temporary sign. The other three, you know, are anchored, more permanent signs. But again, these are going to have sharper graphics and the internal illumination to comply with the mass regs and, you know, and to implement better navigation. Again, when people are in crisis mode, or particularly if you've got someone who's not from the area, like over the Thanksgiving holiday, if someone's injured and they're not familiar with the area, it's important to have visible signage. So again, that's why I think we've got the emphasis along Sandwich Street, and then again, another illuminated sign at the main drag. I can show you the locations, although you have them on your plan as well. I would point out, all four of these signs are more than the 10-foot setback from a right-of-way, so we do meet that criteria within the zoning bylaw, you know, and that, of course, exists to make sure that signage doesn't obstruct visibility, navigation as you're turning out onto the street or coming in from the street. So we're good there. The one kind of loose end, if you want to call it that, is the DPW comments. So we received comments several weeks ago, and they were really kind of, I want to call them administrative in nature. They were calling for a new submission in terms of the plan. So in 2022, just so you understand, sign design, it produced a plan. It wasn't stamped by an engineer. It showed the approximate locations of the signs that were being replaced at that time. We went down the same path this time, thinking it wouldn't be an issue. Again, new personnel in DPW, and Rick Bossy, James Downey, they picked up and said, wow, look, you really need a stamp plan. And, you know, again, being a bit nitpicky, they said, if you look at the way the signs are illustrated on that, the vendor's plan, you know, if you took that and scaled it, you'd have like 18-foot wide signs, which of course wasn't the case. So the hospital engaged Beals &amp; Thomas. Beals &amp; Thomas prepared a proper plot plan. It's a stamped plot, stamped by a professional land surveyor, and that shows the precise locations of the signs to, and it's dimensionally accurate. So that was done in response to the DPW comments, but we only got that plan on November 25th, just making the deadline for this hearing, so we don't have a clean letter back from the DPW yet. Again, I think these are relatively minor DPW comments. You know, they asked for the stamped sign. They said, make sure that, you know, sign W4, which is the one that's closest to O'Bree Street, doesn't encroach on a sidewalk, which of course it doesn't. It just wasn't shown clear on that sign. And then they said, you know, make it to scale, which it is. So again, relatively benign DPW comments, which we've satisfied, and, but we don't have a clean letter from them, just to be clear. And there we are. So again, I don't need to belabor it, but I can kind of run you through the location of these signs. You can see a little better. So this is the overall campus, and then I zoomed in a bit so you can see more clearly. This is not Beals &amp; Thomas. This is my handiwork here. You could probably tell an engineer wouldn't do it this way. This is just so you can kind of pick them out because they're a bit hard to see when you're looking at the overall site plan. So again, these are the three signs along Sandwich Street that are going to be implemented. And then, you know, this is as you come down from O'Bree and over here and come through. Let's see. Yeah, as you come down from O'Bree and up kind of the main drag here, there's this fourth sign right here. So those are the locations of the new signs. This is the spec. They're all the same size. Let me see, what's that, 110 inches? I think we come out at 44 square feet per sign, or 43 square feet, thereabouts, when you take the dimensions. But they're all of the same build and dimensions, yes. You've got 104 inches from the base of the brick footer to the top of the crest of the sign there, and then they're about six feet in width at their, at their widest point, you know, from there to there. So they're all the same size. Again, I can walk you through them. You can see at the top of each of these slides, we've got these identifying labels here, sign W1, 2, 3, and 4, and those correspond to the markings on the plan. So again, they're all directing, you know, you can see what the substance of the sign is. They direct the emergency department most prominently as you go through these signs, you know, cancer center, birthing, cardiovascular, et cetera. So obviously, each of the four signs is different, but they're all quite similar in appearance. I can give you more detail, but in a nutshell, that's what we're here for, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that Mr. Coughlin could take some questions, too, if you'd like.
So I'm happy that you're doing the signs. I drive by Jordan Hospital on Sandwich every day. I live in Chiltonville, and a lot of people come tooling out of parking lot A. It's very dangerous. They're not paying attention. They're dealing with whatever's going on with their own fact pattern. So I appreciate that you're getting new signs because it is a very, on more than one occasion, that parking lot A people have been coming out very quickly. Sometimes they, it appears that they're looking for the emergency room or something, and they go flying around, and they're not paying attention to the people that are driving down the street that are not going to the hospital. So I'm in support of the petition, but I, just because it is a safety concern, that parking lot A in particular.
Funny you should mention that. That happened to me this afternoon, so I agree with my colleague.
Okay, so I don't have a problem with it. I mean, because one is, we're modifying the size of the signs, also the variances. All of these signs do have a variance in place for, which is basically just the internal illumination, because that's prohibited in the bylaw, and the way around that's a variance. I don't have an issue with it, even changing the size, because actually, when I've been up to your Boston campus, you know, they do direct people to different parts of the campus and bring it in, so I can understand it. And I do, you know, I don't have a problem, and I do with the illumination on Sandwich Street in the fact that, okay, the signs that are there right now are blue, and they have white lettering, I believe, or yellow light or something. So anyways, I noticed the illumination that comes out and goes across the lawn is a lot brighter up at the other side where the white is. However, the lettering definitely is far superior because, you know, you've got people coming there that, you know, their significant other might be in there, whatever else, and it definitely has to be well-read. So the only thing that I, if the board was acceptable to it, is the only condition I would want on this is that the illumination does not exceed the one that we put in on O'Bree Street. I wouldn't want it to get any brighter over there, only because that's a residential side. The one internally, I don't really care, because that's in the middle of your parking lot anyways. But that's the only concern I have down there. So I would want to, if it's acceptable to the board, to just put a condition that it could not exceed the illumination of the sign that you have on O'Bree Street that we approved.
And Mr. Leary, was that one of the ones we approved in 2022? Do you recall?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, then I think these would be.
Because it's, you know, and I actually, I kind of, I mean, we got somebody here from the hospital. If they can even just lessen a little bit of the light, again, it's, I'm just thinking of the neighbors in that neighborhood, because when you go up to the other side, I have no problem with it. I think we do need it because it is for safety, and the way I look at this is, you guys aren't doing it to attract business, it's just to make sure that everybody, for safety, basically. So that's my only comment.
David.
Well, what I'd say, I agree about the illumination, especially three in a row, and they're not far apart. So I would not, you know, we want appropriate illumination, but not too much. I was even wondering if you could somehow add a screen or a little blind so the houses across the street received less light than people driving on the street either way. However, I'm supportive of it because I will say, I personally have used, you know, aspects of the campus, such as endoscopy and endoscopy pickup, which is currently confusing. Like, where do you go? These signs clarify it. So I think as the report from the planning department said, it's, it really is safety and, you know, things that can save a minute or two or three, as well as convenience or confusion, driving round and round looking for the right department. So the signs make sense. I, too, am worried just about the overall illumination, but also would ask, at least to investigate, to see if there's a way of, on the O'Bree Street, pardon me, the Sandwich Road, Sandwich Street ones, see if there's just a way to screen them a little bit from the houses across the street, but keep them visible from the cars going either way. And I'm not quite sure how to do it, but just basically, otherwise, it's three, you know, light rectangles in a row as you drive either direction, but they are needed.
At this time, I'm going to open this to public comment, unless you have something else, Rob, that you want to add right now.
No, I mean, I guess, I guess if the board were to adopt Mr. Peck's suggestion about screening, I'd just like to explore that a bit more, but we can hold off on that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that when we get into conditions. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this petition, either for or against? Yes, please.
I need to work right now.
Yes. Yes, it's being recorded, so we need to have you there.
I'm Julie White. I live at 274 Sandwich Street, so directly across from Lot A. So the illumination was a concern of mine, similar to what Mr. Peck just said, because it's right there. But equally important is the safety of that parking lot. We live right across the street. There, it's, it's an issue all the time. I've been curious, I know it's not related to the signage, but to have a crosswalk, almost even with like the flashing light for people that are crossing the street, because the sidewalk ends also right there by Lot A, so people are like trying to cross over. So that was my concern, is it's just a safety issue coming in and out of that parking lot. So I do agree with the signage, and I think maybe the signage down by the emergency room could be a little bit brighter than the other two ones, if that's possible with the screening. But yeah, traffic right there is tricky, especially because people are coming up over the crest of that hill, and they're flying. I've always thought about, could we put a speed bump just on that eastern side, you know, beyond, if you were leaving the emergency room and heading back, so that the ambulance isn't full of people, but something to slow those cars down, because you've got the cars coming up fast over the hill, and then the people trying to exit that parking lot, and it's, it's scary. And so I do support the signage for clarity, but if there's any way to make it a little bit lighter, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else, sir? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for a board discussion. Mr. D'Ambrosia, do you have anything else you would like to add before we?
Nope, no, Mr. Chairman. No, thank you.
Okay. This is for board discussion only. David.
So I think how we heard Mr. Peck talk about screenage at the same time
at the same time, we have the neighbors saying that we may need more lights for a crosswalk. And so, you know, that is, I think that we have a hospital. Lots of hospitals are going out of business. For New Hampshire, there's one that's going out. I think the, I like the idea, the petitioner is here trying to get things more safe. And I think that Lot A is, you've almost got, hit someone today. I think it's a bad place. And I think we have the neighbor that is concerned, but it also is a safety issue. And what is safety? That's why we, that's why Teddy, not Teddy Roosevelt, but Franklin Roosevelt started the bylaws back in 1932. It's for safety. So I'm in full support of this. If we can possibly screen, like what David was saying, but doesn't that go against, you know, possibly, and lowering the lights, I think what the hospital proposes, I'm, I'd like to go with what they propose, because I think it's a dangerous situation. And usually, I've been on it a long time, I never really talk about safety too much, ever. But I think this is a serious safety thing. And we're lucky to have this hospital. With all the hospitals shutting down and the steward gentleman who took off with all the cash, that guy he didn't own to Jordan. So I'm, so I'm in full support of this. And I think that we can screen it from the neighbors a little bit, but we have to be careful. We can't have, can't please everybody. But I think the, the neighbor in particular knows the safety issue. And said, can we put up a crosswalk? Crosswalk would have more lights. So I'm in full support, and I'm not necessarily going to go along with any amendment or recommendation to turn down the lights at this point.
I'm also in support of this, and I would also be in support of Michael's condition about keeping the illumination at the same level as O'Bree Street. As long as it's not a problem with the hospital, I'll be fine with it.
David?
I'm fine with it. As I said, it's just having three signs, you know, fairly close to each other. It becomes, you know, potential, you know, especially if they're on all night. You know, the people across the street, you know, will have kind of potentially bright lights coming in their windows all night, every night. So, you know, I'm just, I don't want to make it a condition, but a suggestion. But in general, I know suggestions are not, you know, legally enforceable. But was just thinking along the vertical face or the vertical post closest to the street, if they could just add like a little six-inch screen, you know, each way, so that cars both ways can see it, but it just, just minimizes the light for the neighbors across the street. I'm supportive of keeping the illumination no more than O'Bree Street, you know, if it's the same. The, that's been working well. And this is an important resource for not just Plymouth, but the whole region. And we should recognize, people are coming from 30 and 40 miles away to come to this hospital 24 hours a day. And so basically, I'm in support with just that suggestion to minimize light pollution to the neighbors across the street.
Okay, Michael?
Well, again, I'm, I'm definitely willing to go around the word prohibited and the, on the illumination, because it was never intended for the hospital anyways. It's intended for more downtown. So it wouldn't end up being like Delaware, Indianapolis, where the, you know, Navy is there, and they got the bars lit up and the whole thing. You know, Plymouth wanted to be quaint, so it doesn't really pertain to this. This is more safety. Again, I definitely would like, it seems like everybody's in favor of putting the condition on that it can't exceed the one on O'Bree Street that we did, this board actually passed. I like David's suggestion. I hope, basically, your listeners, basically what he was thinking was just that post just going out an extra six inches. And if you think about it, it won't block anything from the traffic, but it would help if you're directly across the street looking at that light, you know?
So it's like something on this side?
Yeah, just, you know.
We're getting into designing it, and we are not going to do that.
We're not going to put a condition, but what I'm saying is, just I hope they're listening, is actually David's suggestion is a good suggestion, though, because it would, would keep it down on the neighbors, you know? But I am far going to the lighter color. I did go up there and look at it the dark, and you, it, for an older person, it would be harder to read that dark sign with the light lettering the other way around. I mean, it sticks out at you. So I don't have any issues with it, other than just the condition that it can't surpass the illumination of the one on O'Bree Street.
So that is going to be condition number three? Okay. Did you get that? Yeah?
How would you like it worded?
Can't, condition three, can't exceed the brightness of O'Bree Street signs?
Existing O'Bree.
Yes.
And just if I may, that's only for the Sandwich Street signs or for all four? You want to apply that condition?
All of them.
Uh, no, the three, just the Sandwich Street. The one and the other one's on the interior of the parking lot. That's where the plywood sign is, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, the temporary sign, yep.
Right, I mean, that's in the middle of the parking lot. I don't have a problem with, but it wouldn't hurt.
Then, then it's.
Yeah, just do the illumination.
Okay. It sounds as though we are in agreement on the signage for the hospital and the illumination for the hospital and the placement. So I'm going to entertain a motion.
My motion that we accept, we approve case number 4140 with the three conditions.
I'll second.
All right. Okay, on case number 4140, the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital at 275 Sandwich Street, we have a motion to approve case number 4140 with three conditions. And I will ask all those in favor, do you, before that, do you want to discuss the conditions? They're to boilerplate, and we've already discussed the third one.
I'm all set.
So, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next case will be case number 4138. Elaine and Andrea Kelly, Grady Consulting at 10 Goldfinch Lane. And I will ask the clerk to read the advertisement into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Case number 4138. The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 26th Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, no, actually, today is December the 2nd, thank you. 2024 at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Elaine and Andrea Kelly requesting a special permit required per section 203, 2B, 2D, 4 to construct a retaining wall exceeding 12 feet in height on the property of 10 Goldfinch Lane. Shown as Lot 40 on plat 96 of the assessor's map stated January 1st, 2024, in a R25 zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Seated on this will be Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and Mr. Peck. And myself. Who will be?
Thank you, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right, as you had noted during the introduction, this is a special permit for a retaining wall greater than 12 feet in height. It's a continuation of a previous hearing. We had been working responding to comments from DPW, which have been satisfactorily addressed. We have received a letter from the DPW to that effect. Basically, the changes that we have made to the plan since the previous hearing was the applicant obtained permission or from the abutting owner, Nancy Gillespie, who's also here this evening for conducting this work along the property line. We've added notations to the plan that the property line will be staked at approximately 25-foot intervals, so it'll be very clearly demarcated for the contractors during construction. They have chosen McDougal Brothers Construction out of Marshfield, who we're very familiar with, and we're confident they'll do an excellent job on this. If it's necessary to shift the wall slightly inward from the property line, the contractor is prepared to do that. We don't anticipate that will be necessary, because the highest point of this wall is actually parallel to Goldfinch Lane. It's slightly less height on the property line adjacent to Nancy Gillespie's there. So we don't think it's going to be necessary to shift the wall, but they're prepared to do that if they're not able to excavate or remove any vegetation, which will take place entirely on the applicant's property. DPW had also asked for a basin or temporary basin, parallel to Goldfinch Lane, between Goldfinch and the proposed wall, to collect any surface water runoff. This is at slightly of low point along Goldfinch Lane, and the applicants do not intend to change any drainage patterns. Existing drainage patterns will be maintained, and a note has been added to the plan to that effect as well. This is a large retaining, large block retaining wall, so it's backfilled entirely with crushed stone. So if anything, this is only going to help drainage in the area. The highest point in the wall is 14 feet, just a little bit above that 12-foot maximum, which triggered the special permit. There was also a question of whether the construction of the wall necessitates a guardrail along the top of the wall. We don't feel that's necessary. We're actually moving the wall further from the road than the existing block wall, which is falling down at the moment. So we'll actually have a larger shoulder, larger level shoulder adjacent to the Goldfinch Lane travelway. So we don't feel a guardrail is necessary, because we are increasing the level portion of the shoulder adjacent to the roadway. We've added notes to the plan to protect the existing septic system and well from heavy machinery, construction operations during construction, as requested by DPW. And I believe we've addressed all the comments from DPW and hoping to obtain approval for this. They're anxious to get started and get this thing stabilized. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'll say, you know.
David, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we had received both the initial plan and the revised plan. And the revised plan does indeed show, you know, a sort of, you know, a low spot to collect the drainage. I also looked at the plan, this, it is 14 feet, but not along the entire length. It's 12 or less for at least half, if not a little bit more. It's 14 feet at the middle point. And the notes were added. I compared the notes, you know, against the DPW comments. And so, as Mr. Grady explained, they have made the modifications requested by DPW and sensitivity to the neighbor. So it looked okay to me. And I'd just say, when they say this is a failed retaining wall, this is one of the most failed retaining walls I've ever seen in Plymouth.
Just a tad. You could use a little adjustment.
I didn't share the pictures earlier.
Yeah. So, so I'm, I'm okay with it. The applicant's been responsive to concerns.
Michael?
Okay, I do have a couple comments, and actually, I do have a, one condition I would probably want to add. But on your letter on the 15th, you talk about having a fence on the top of the wall, and they agreed to it, and it was on sheet two, but I didn't see it on mine. And from.
We would be fine with that as a condition. The typical 14-foot gravity wall section on sheet two, which is basically middle-left on the sheet, does include a notation of a 36-inch-high minimum fence along the top of the wall. So we, we are proposing a fence, not a guardrail, but a fence.
Right, exactly, okay, because I didn't see on mine, but that's fine. So, I mean, I definitely would probably want to add that on the condition, because it's, it's close to Ms. Gillespie, her turnaround. I noticed, I went over there today, I was standing there, I'm like, holy wow, it is close.
We would not be opposed to that as a condition, and that's certainly the intent of the plan.
Okay, then the other condition, one other condition I kind of, if at all, this, this construction digging for the wall gets into, you know, does the road, takes part of it, that the DPW actually sign off on what they use for fill, because I'd hate to see them put back sand on this road instead of like dense pack or something. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So I mean, that's the only other condition. If they don't go in the road, they don't have to do anything. But if they do do anything in the road, I'd like DPW to sign on, just so that I'm sure that they're not going to put sand there, and the neighbors got to drive through it, you know?
That's certainly an acceptable condition. And I will point out that that section of the wall that's closest to the road there is only five feet in height.
Right.
So it's, it's not high at that point, so.
Right. I don't see you actually getting into the road, but it's just, I want to make sure that we take care of that for the neighbors.
Perfectly acceptable condition.
Okay.
That's a good call.
Yeah, I took a ride up there, and I agree, that is quite the wall that you're, you need to fix up there. And I did see your notation about the fence, which if I were the homeowner, I think I'd want.
Yep.
In case you have visitors that don't really know where they're pulling into, so.
Interestingly, the applicant's father built this wall about 50 years ago. So they did get about half a century out of it.
There you go.
Yeah.
Just, it's a funny thing you say that about 50 years ago, because I live on the coast, and I'm 156 feet up. People along the coast are building these walls called gabberian baskets, and they look like lobster pots full of, of stone. And they have about a 40 to 50-year longevity before they're just junk again.
Right.
So, so, hey, he did good.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Well, I await a motion.
Well, we're going to gather two conditions.
You're adding two conditions, and there are two.
Right, so it'll be four.
So we would have four conditions.
Right.
Do you have that, Denise?
Okay, the, the fence that they, we're not going to want to condition it to any type, but. Fence that they agreed to put there.
Do we need to do that, because it's on the drawings?
Yeah.
You know, so I know that we need to add that condition if it's, if we're approving the documents as revised.
Okay.
All right.
I'm just.
Either way, I was thinking.
Either way, but if it's on there, then it's on there.
I would see, because.
Then for sure.
It's going to get done.
It's going to get picked up.
Okay, I've got no problem with that, but again.
All right, we'll leave it. And the DPW must okay any fill, or any work on the edge?
If they damage the road in any way, that the DPW have to sign off on what they do to correct it.
Okay.
So, yep. Having said that, I motion that we approve case number 4138 with the four conditions.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. Michael?
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Leary and a second by Mr. Peck to approve case number forty-one thirty-eight with four conditions. All those in favor? It is a unanimous vote. Go right ahead.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, we have a informal hearing, case number forty-one one-two, Sheridan Home Builders, three ninety-three Court Street. And this is a informal hearing to make some modifications. Sitting on this will be the five of us. This is an informal hearing, so there was no ad in the paper or anything. So go right ahead.
Good evening, Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders. I'm here tonight just to talk to you about a couple of minor changes I made to the floor plans on three ninety-three Court Street. The site has been cleared. We started excavation. Once excavation started, I realized the original design just was not good for the site. I went in, excuse me, I went in and spoke with Jason about it, told him what my thoughts were, and he just asked that I come in informally tonight, just to go over the basic design changes with you guys. The original design called for two apartments in the basement, and that was going to be done through a walkout, and the site just did not allow a walkout. It was not effective, it did not work well at all. So the new design, what you guys have the plans for, I eliminated the two apartments in the basement and put everything above grade. So there's three apartments on the first floor, two apartments on the second floor, two apartments on the third floor. I can, if it's in... I don't know if we, there we go. So, this was the original design with the first floor, and that was the basement. Second floor, third floor, that was the front. And then that was the rear of the building with a series of decks, and that's how you were going to access essentially all of the units from the rear, except for the two first-floor units. So overall, I feel the new design is actually way more conducive to the site. We eliminated all the decks in the rear. Everything's going to be entry through the front. And now I'm actually happy to say we're going to be able to have three units that are going to be fully handicapped accessible, instead of just the two that are originally proposed. So that in a nutshell are the minor changes I'm making to it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Nope, I'm okay.
Okay, so the, that up there, A six, is the original plan that came before us?
Yes, sir.
With the four, four only on that one side?
Yep.
And the three in the front? So now that you've moved them up, we're still only looking at three floors from what I saw on the plan, right?
Correct. So the new design is still only three stories, but instead of having two apartments in the basement level...
Right.
Everything's going to be above grade. The original design, the second and third floor, those were two-story units, and I just eliminated that and made them all one-story units. But the height of the building didn't change, the square footage, the layout, nothing changed. Every, all the design was done within the original proposed footprint.
Okay, and height?
I'm sorry, what?
And height?
Yes, yes, sir, and height, yep.
Okay, so it's not substantial then, okay.
I didn't think of that.
Yeah, no, it's like, well, the only reason I asking these questions was, we didn't have the plans, the original plans, so here I am trying to compare what your changes to with nothing from where it came. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, complete, yep, yes.
So that's the reason I'm asking, okay.
You know, and I, I was the same way in terms of comparing it to memory. So what disappeared is the stairs on the back.
Yes.
And does, did the building, because it looked like you just have a front stairway, sort of, I'll call it a stair, central stair alcove out at the front.
Correct, yep.
What, what is the second way out for the apartments? You know, has the building inspector said, you know, the revised, revised layout passes, you know, his review of, or the fire department in terms of second means of egress?
Which it does, so through the controlled construction of the building, the second means of egress actually isn't technically required. All of the, the new proposed units will have back doors onto a deck, but that technically wouldn't constitute a second means of egress, but through the sprinkler system and the use of the building, through the controlled construction, the single means of egress out the front satisfied everybody.
Oh, yeah, it was just important to me that the building inspector approved the layout, because clearly with the original one, you had sort of both front and back, and it was, it was, you know, a little more straightforward.
Uh, no, sir, that's actually incorrect. The first one was still single means of egress out, it was just through the back, where the new building now, all of the egress is through the front.
Okay. The key thing was, for me, safety, you know?
Yes, sir.
For the occupants, so, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I, I, it's substantial, as far as I'm concerned.
When I looked at it, I thought that, too. I really did. I thought, actually, it's better, so...
Well, like I say, until we got here and I could, the plans, I'm saying, when I only got one set of plans, am I, so what am I supposed to compare this to? Because it has to be substantial for us not to ask for a modification, you see what I mean?
Yes, I apologize for that. Next time, I'll definitely provide the old drawings.
That's fine, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, well, I await a motion.
So this is under what?
This will just be approved of, a change, it's not a substantial.
Yeah, that it's not a substantial change. So I'm going to say that on case, approved case number four, one, one, two, that it's not a substant, it's not, it's a substant, unsubstantial change.
I'll second.
Okay. Mike and David, you did them all tonight. So we are going to put up here in the notes, this is not a... Before I ask for a vote, I will ask, Spencer, do you have anything that you would like to weigh in on this?
No comments at this time.
Okay, I should have done that first. I await a motion?
We await a motion.
All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Go ahead and build the way.
Thank you.
It also got better because it was a roof now. Yeah, what is, it's usually always is better.
All right, that pretty much concludes the business of the board for the evening. I have some correspondence here that I'm going to allow, allow. I'm going to share with the board, and it was from the Building Department concerning two cases, and we will talk about that when that comes forward to the board. Other than that, thank you very much, and this concludes tonight's meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to adjourn.